You're free to start.
Okay, welcome everybody tonight. Can I, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Can we have approval of the agenda for the June 15, 2020 Stone Mills Township Special Meeting of Council. Move by Wenda, second by Debbie. To the environment regarding site plan 04 2019. Before we get going, we're gonna, we have some people here tonight that have been on this Zoom before to help us out. We had Peter Dor from the Omaha Mark Boone, Quinty Conservation, Mark Slack, the Africa, and from the community concerned citizens of the environment is Mark Oliver, Jeff Juan, and Susan Moore. So Mark, I'm gonna hand this over to you. I don't know who wants to speak there, but we'll let you go through the presentation, your group, and that way we'll get it in and we'll go from there after. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Oliver, and I'm representing the group of concerned citizens this evening. I've been a resident of Aronsville, having lived both seasonally and permanently on Beaver Lake for over 60 years. I've been serving as Chair of the T E C D C, the Local Community Development Committee, for over 10 years. Joining me today, as Eric said, are Susan Moore and Jeff Juan. On behalf of the Concerned Citizens for our community environment, a group of volunteers that formed almost 20 years ago to represent the interests of the communities in which they live, we thank you for arranging this opportunity to address council publicly regarding the intensive livestock operation proposed just behind the hamlet of Aronsville. We are here today to ask the Council of Stone Mills Township to delay the issuance of the building permit by 60 days to give us the opportunity to conduct our own review. Furthermore, we ask that you make it a condition that the applicant Slack Family Farms Incorporated authorize our expert representatives to enter the property to conduct a study and be given access to all relevant documents relating to that review. This is not about being against farming. We emphatically state that we support our farming heritage and community. Above all else, this is now about public health. As such, it should have invited public consultation before moving to approve the application. There was no notice given and no invitation for meaningful public consultation. Had there been sufficient notice given to the community, we would have been able to engage experts to work on our behalf. We've been deprived of that opportunity, and we would like that opportunity. We want to need to understand the true impact of what the applicant is setting out to do. In Mr. Darby's letter of May 29, 2020 addressed to council, he made the argument that while the Ontario statute law does not require public notice of site plan approval applications, nor does it require public consultation, the common law principle associated with procedural fairness requires that all persons subjected to government action are treated fairly. What this means is every person whose interests are at risk is entitled to participate in the process before a decision is taken. We are aware that the Supreme Court of Canada has held that procedural fairness incorporates the principles of fundamental justice in section seven of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. We are therefore of the view that since council provided no meaningful notice and opportunity for public consultation before the site plan application was approved, and that the decision in this case will likely have substantive adverse effects on the neighborhood health and safety, council is therefore failed in its duty to provide procedural fairness with respect to the site plan application approval decision. As a result, we believe our section seven rights under the Charter have been infringed, and we believe that we have charter grounds to request a judicial stay of council's decision regarding the site plan application and related permits should council not grant the 60-day delay we seek. Now, out of an abundance of caution, council should allow the public the opportunity and the time needed to perform our own review. It's in the municipality's best interest. If council goes ahead without allowing this opportunity that we seek, it leaves us with no other choice but to seek justice through the courts. Furthermore, if you move forward with this application based on the studies commissioned to date by the applicant without allowing us to obtain our own study to satisfy ourselves, then it's our intention to hold the municipality and the applicant liable for any and all damages that may be occurred in the future. If you deny us the time and the ability to do our own review, and there's some sort of negative impact down the road, you'll have to be held accountable because you denied the ability to do our own review. At this point, I'm going to ask Jeff Juan to say a few words.
Eric, can everybody hear me?
Yes, Jeff.
Okay, thank you, Mark, and your worship and members of council, thank you all so much for giving this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I can tell you that I, I agree with Mark that council should allow the public the opportunity and the time needed to perform our own review. We need access to all of the information and to retain our own technical experts. The building permit must be delayed for 60 days in order to allow this to happen. I want to tell you a bit about myself. We bought our farm on Croydon Road in Stone Mills in the mid 70s. At that time, all our neighbors were farmers, and most that inherited their farms from their parents. We were the new people on the road. They welcomed us. It was great to be part of the farming community. Our seven kids love their time here at the farm. Today, we have 200 acres and our workland is part of Robbie McCutcheon's dairy farm. We have lived here full-time since 1998, and we back onto the Salmon River. We are not against farming. We are against this intensive livestock operation in this location so close to the hamlet of Aronsville. Now, I want to tell council a story. 18 years ago, I became involved in the so far successful fight to stop the Richmond landfill from expanding to accept Toronto's garbage. It would have been 20 sky domes full of garbage at the Richmond landfill in Greater Napanee. It was quite a fight. I chaired the joint team of the municipalities, the Mohawks, and the Concerned Citizen Groups. In those days, I spent a lot of time with the chief, visiting Toronto, lobbying politicians, and meeting with government officials. The chief said to me, Jeff, when you meet with the government, bring your tomahawk. And that's a lesson I've always remembered. There are some haunting similarities between the intensive hog operation at Richmond Land and the Richmond landfill. And I'll tell you what they are, because they're important. After all of our work, in 2006, the Ministry of the Environment declined to approve the expansion. And they declined it because it was proposed to be located, the expansion, on, on the underlying fractured bedrock and karst features, and there was a significant risk of leaks endangering public health. We had a mammoth celebration. But in 2008, Waste Management turned around and applied again for essentially the same project. And I'm wondering if that sounds familiar to everybody. For those who don't know, this is the second attempt by the Slack family to locate an intensive hog operation at this location. Many of us on the committee were here for the first fight, and some of you on council were as well. So you remember what happened. It was a, it was a difficult time for all of us. And I think you know that in the community now, there's a major amount of concern about this proposal. After years of denial by Waste Management, and by the way, these denials were supported by the Ministry of the Environment, it's now proven that the landfill was leaking into the groundwater. Neighboring wells were contaminated, and people became seriously ill. By the way, toxicity, toxicity, toxicity is transferred by washing as much as drinking. So if you wash in water that's contaminated, your body absorbs the contamination toxins, and you can be serious, become seriously ill just by washing in. And extreme weather makes matters even worse. Heavy rain can arrive unannounced. And the heavy rain can wash contaminants through the karst features into the aquifers beneath. As of today, Waste Management have been unable, they've spent millions of dollars to drill hundreds of holes, but they have been unable to determine where, where the leachate is going. Karst channels and fractured bedrock make it extremely difficult to find the and remediate leaks. The landfill should never have been located on the fractured limestone. And if the officials who approved the location of the dump could take back their decision, they would eagerly do so. We believe that the intensive livestock operation poses a threat to public health and safety, and we want the opportunity to perform our own review and give council the information they need to consider their decision. In 60 days, we could have our review done and find that everything is in order. Everything is okay, and we can't find any new risks. Or maybe it should be stopped. Taking this time protects the municipality, and it would take you off the hook. 60 days is a reasonable amount of time, and it's doable. And now I'd like to ask Susan Moore to carry on.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, Susan.
Okay. Yeah. Good evening. I'm Susan Moore. Are you sure?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Susan Moore. I'm a resident of Tamworth. I am with the Concerned Citizens Group. I'm also president of the Friends of the Salmon River, and I've spent the last 15 years helping to protect our clean lakes, wetlands, and the Salmon River. All of these are key to the
Start again.
Sorry, should I start again with an interruption there?
You're doing just fine.
You're doing fine, Susan.
Oh, okay, fine.
Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, working to protect our lakes, wetlands, and the Salmon River, all are key to our superb landscape and to our tourist industry. I do agree with Mark and Jeff. It is in everyone's best interest to give us the time to allow us to do our own analyses. On May 2 of 2001, Representatives of Environment Canada came to assess the potential impact on our environment of the intensive livestock operation proposed by Mark Slack in 2001, the same site as the current proposal. They toured Aronsville, the Beaver Lake area, and roads and waterways surrounding the site. Some members of council, the agricultural committee, and staff, as well as a Quinty Conservation representative, were present during the discussion that followed their visit. A C C C E letter, that's the Concerned Citizens, to council members dated May 7, 2001 summarized the event and discussion. Based on the observations they made, the Environment Canada reps concluded that the proposed site is not suitable for an intensive livestock operation or manure spreading. The potential for surface and groundwater contamination is high, given the topography, the soil type, and the proximity to watercourses. It was clearly noted that the steam, the stream that runs from the Slack property feeds directly into Beaver Lake. None of the hydrogeological reports or commentaries that the municipality has made public to date make any mention of this stream. Can you please bring up the map that I, of the proposed site that I sent in?
Go ahead.
Okay. This is a map that was prepared by Dougal Carmichael. He's a professor emeritus at Queen's University in the Department of Geological Sciences and an experienced cartographer. So here we are in Aronsville. On the far right, you can see the two lobes of Beaver Lake and just in from them, the hamlet of Aronsville. The red line is the outline of the Slack property. The blue shapes that almost look a bit like lakes are actually spring wetlands. And the dotted blue line you see on the, off to the right, is the stream. So this map clearly shows there is a stream leading from the middle of the Slack property to Beaver Lake. It's taken in the springtime. Note that parts of the stream and wetlands that dry up in the summer may still be there underground. Um, can we just move to the second part of that, which is the street shot? Thank you. Um, so you can see, here we are on Road 41. The stream goes through, the stream actually goes through the bank of trees on the left, then it runs under County Road 41, comes out on the east side, and flows over to Beaver Lake. If you can just go back momentarily to the map. Thank you. Um, note first of all that the barn is just slightly out of place here. If you look down in the bottom left corner, the Slack property, you'll see, um, a small outline of the barn there. It's not actually right on the property line. It's actually 30 meters in from the property line. And what I really want you to look at is the sinkhole, which is well marked down in that bottom left-hand corner. That sinkhole is, as you can see, right beside the proposed location of the barn. Geologists know that a sinkhole is a sure sign of karst, and Jeff referred us to some of those problems. Well, what does this mean? Possible sources of contamination could be a leaking manure tank or the fields that are spread with manure. These factors I mentioned, meaning the stream and the sinkhole, point to an easy route for contaminated water to flow into neighboring wells, the groundwater, and the Salmon River system. What about the watershed? The risk to public health is accompanied by a risk to the watershed. At this time, the Salmon River is an ecological system in balance. But it can easily be undone. Runoff from an intensive livestock operation could lead to a wild growth of water weeds and algae and disastrous defects for fish and other aquatics. Excess phosphorus and nitrogen in hog manure, along with climate warming, causes outbreaks of toxic blue-green algae. This uses up all the oxygen and suffocates the fish. Not only is there a risk to public health, a constant flow of contaminated groundwater or a spill from a manure lagoon can change the Salmon River from a flow of clean, ecologically healthy water into the Bay of Quinty to a damaging toxic inflow just when the Bay of Quinty is regaining its health. Note that it's now on the public record, we are giving council the opportunity to say yes to giving us time to do the necessary review. Council, we hope that you decide to work with us to help answer all these questions. Thank you, and over to Mark.
Thank you, Susan.
Can I hear you, Mark?
Thank you. And as we said, it's in everyone's interest to provide the time and opportunity for us to do our own review of this particular application. Again, it's not about farming. It's not about being against farming. We are supportive of that farming and community heritage. This is about public health and public well-being. We have brought to your attention today just a few of the reasons for our concerns for the public health. Environment Canada's expression of concern in 2001 when they visited the site, uh, the T E C D C and Friends of the Salmon River letter of May 28, the Concerned Citizens Letter of June the 12th, Quinty Conservation's Commentaries from February 12 and April 30th, XCG's Consulting Limited's recent third-party review with six, uh, concerns raised, all pointing to weaknesses in the Hydro G study, and certainly the map presented by Susan is, is a very powerful persuader. Uh, it should signal to you that this is the very serious consequences for a factory farm being built in this proposed location. So again, we're asking for a 60-day delay in the issuing of a building permit with the authorization for our experts to enter the property and to be given access to the documentation that they need in order to conduct an independent review. That'll provide us with the opportunity to truly understand the effect of what granting this approval will have on the health and safety of the community. And as Jeff said, maybe after the review, everyone will be satisfied that there's no deleterious effect. We'll never have to worry about anything, and if that's the case, wouldn't you welcome that? So we're giving you that opportunity to say yes to working cooperatively towards a mutually beneficial resolution for this matter. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to hearing your decision. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, does anybody, um, like, um, Peter Doris or Mark Boone or Mark Slack, anybody like to have a few words? John, you say, Mark? Anybody in council got it?
Are you, are you asking Mark Boone or Mark Slack?
Well, um, we'll go with Mark Boone first and move on through. Yeah, I just trying to everybody here the opportunity to speak. Go ahead, Mark Boone.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any comments to add. Um, I was just asked this afternoon to attend this meeting in case there was any direct questions of our review. Uh, the information that Susan did present was interesting. We, we don't have mapping of any sinkholes or known karst on the property, but I'm certainly available to look into that further if that is determined to be necessary. Um, we do have some mapping of some watercourses. Uh, maybe not quite to the extent what Susan had, but would be interesting to review that. Uh, we do rely on the Nutrient Management Act to regulate how manure is applied to a property, what the setbacks are from wells, what the setbacks are from watercourses. There are lots of regulations in place that regulate that. So, yeah, no, I, I'm available if there's any direct questions from anybody that, uh, I didn't prepare a summary of, of our, of our work.
Okay, John, do you have something to say?
Well, since we're, we're dealing with hydrogeology, since Mark is, uh, is, is speaking. Um, Mark, have you had a chance to look at the XCG, um, hydrogeology report?
Yes, I did. Yeah, I did receive the comments. So our review ended up with recommendations for additional work. And so there isn't complete sign-off on the water quantity testing that was done. We had recommended additional testing be completed in a dry time of year. We never support testing in the spring months because we all know the water table is at its highest. We'd like to see it in the low time. And I think XCG did a good job on adding some additional comments that could be included, uh, extending the pumping test to a longer duration, pumping more than just what the proposed farm might use, say doubling the water quantity, and a few other measures there and recommendations about the monitoring program. So I think what's beneficial here is this particular project. We got the opportunity to specify a baseline survey and a groundwater monitoring program, which typically aren't the case with a normal agricultural operation. When they apply for a building permit, you don't get to see those things. Those were items that were recommended back in the 2001 hydrogeological report, so it was a, was a carry-through. So, yeah, no, the XCG, XCG comments were good, and I think they could be incorporated to make this more sound.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, and as far, just, just for people who are listening, who may not have, uh, um, seen your comments, Mark. What happens if during excavation, fractured limestone, karst-type limestone is encountered? What, what is incumbent then on, uh, on Mr. Slack to, to do if that is uncovered?
Well, it would mean that if there weren't suitable engineering geotechnical measures that could be put in place to make sure the site is sound, and then you could build a manure storage and a barn on it, he would have to relocate to a different portion of the property. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we look at mapping of karst that's done by the Ontario Geological Survey, and they have mapping of known karst, so that's areas where we're very confident karst exists. And there's mapping of inferred karst, where they know where, yeah, maybe there might be karst here, and then the third level is potential karst. So a portion of this property is mapped as potential karst. And, uh, there's no known karst that, uh, that I'm aware of, but I'm certainly willing to look into what Susan had brought up.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Peter, do you have something? Any comments?
Uh, no, I like Mark Kaboon. Um, I'm here kind of in, in response, or to provide responses to questions and, uh, and so, uh, so, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll just, uh, I'll just leave it at that and, uh, and, uh, and take time for, for your question.
Okay, Mark Slack, go ahead, John.
Yeah, if I could ask Peter, um, just, just for comparison, Peter, using nutrient units as a sort of apples-to-apples comparison, what size of, say, a dairy farm would be comparable to the proposed hog operation here?
So a comparable dairy farm, uh, which would be 267 or 270 nutrient units approximately would be, uh, a herd of about 140 Holstein cows. That's the mature cows, uh, that you find on the farm, plus about 110 heifers and 30 calves, and that brings you, I think that brings you to about 260 or 262 nutrient units. So you're around that 140 cows plus the followers number.
And would that be an unusually large dairy farm in this part of the world?
No, no, uh, uh, so we're seeing increased size of, of, of herds and, uh, and that, and so 140 cows is getting to be more common, I would say.
Thank you.
Mark Slack, you have any comments? Are you with me, Mark? I guess maybe not. Brian, are you there? Mark's in the same room you were at. Is his connection okay?
Yes, he's just trying to gain access to worship.
Okay, I'll just hang out here a half second.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I can, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, I don't, I really don't have any comment. Um, you know, fundamentally, um, if you take a step back, the, the process is established with tremendous guidelines and, and parameters that anybody, if they adhere to, should be able to walk forward. And we believe we have done everything, and actually, we believe we've done more than our fair share of what we needed to do, and we fully expect to be moving forward. I think it would send a tremendous, tremendous negative signal to anybody that's trying to develop anything if it can simply be, um, derailed, um, by, by ratepayers who, um, are half-informed and fully engaged. Thanks for your time.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, if I could ask you, Mark, what effect a, a delay in the issuance of a building permit would have? Um, in other words, how much, uh, how much sort of, um, flexibility do you have in that regard?
Uh, we're behind schedule now.
Okay, um, could I carry on then, Eric?
Yeah.
Um, if I could ask, uh, is Jake Detler with us?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, Jake. If, uh, if a citizens group or anybody for that matter found a serious error or errors, um, in an application, say in the engineering, a miscalculation, um, or, or any flaw in a design, um, after a building permit was issued, um, what would happen?
That's a really good question. I'd kind of like to walk through those in real time. Um, it's kind of a tough hypothetical you're putting toward me here. Um, you could always revoke a permit, I guess, if there was something serious. Um, I mean, it's hard to imagine right now, John, given that, you know, we've had kind of three hydrogeologists involved in this. Um, one thing I was kind of just caught my eye, I was watching Susan's, um, uh, report. Um, she's actually located the barn. She's actually located the barn in the wrong place. It's actually a lot further off the road and a lot further east towards Arensville. It's not in the field. I think that's where he was going to build it twenty years ago. That location wouldn't meet MDS today. So it's further back and you'll, you'll probably never see the barn from the road. And it's nowhere near that sinkhole that she had mapped.
Okay, let me rephrase my initial question. If someone, if someone had received a building permit for, I don't know, a house or an apartment building. And someone came to you a month later and said. You misread the blueprints. There's some structural, structural miscalculation or something like that. In, in the foundation design. What would you do?
Yeah, I could, I could essentially stop the process.
Right.
And, and by some building code order, revoking of the permit, and there's lots of tools in the tool bag. I mean, in that, in that case, it would, you know, probably be on the engineer to work with the municipality. To find a solution to the problem. And I mean, stuff like that happens all the time, John, in terms of, you know, a bridge project where the, the cement was poured and it was found. You know, after months that the concrete that they used didn't meet the engineer's specifications. And essentially they have to tear down the bridge and start over again. That sort of thing happens in the building world as well sometimes. Where a foundation is bored and it, it, you know, something happened, the concrete didn't set correctly, wasn't. Didn't meet the engineer's criteria, and so they got to start over again. You know, things can happen during the building permit process. Yes, if something is discovered. There's no excavation at this site yet, so. I mean, we, there's some unknowns right now in terms of. You know, what we're going to find when we dig a hole. And then that's something that Quinney Conservation and, and the engineer designing the building will work with Mark. To deal with at that time.
Thank you.
So I guess Jake, while you're there, if a red flag comes up. Your worship will be on top of it.
Yeah, and I'm not working alone here either. You know, like the Ministry of Environment will be there as well, doing, doing inspections of the site before he pours concrete. And so will the, the designing engineer. The structural engineer will be there as well. He's. Done his commitment to review.
Okay, Jason Sands, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. To the, to the question posed by Deputy Reeve Wise, I just wondered. If Mr. Peter Doris on the call from Omaha had any experience or light that he could shed as it relates to that, just. I just think that there's, this is an opportunity potentially to educate both members of the public and staff. To the site characterization requirements that are obligated to be satisfied from an applicant's perspective. In demonstrating conformance with the Nutrient Management Act. And how that approval is wrapped up into the nutrient management strategy that is approved in the, in the Omaha's realm. I just, I think that might. It might be assistful, Peter, if, if you did have anything on that front, maybe some experiences. Thank you.
And I assume that's okay, your worship to.
Go ahead.
So thanks, Jason. Yes. And so the site characterization that would be required to be done for any. Any newer expanded liquid manure storage in Ontario. I is important. And so that's where we, we require. That a geoscientist come onto the site, dig at least one test hole, if not. If not multiple test holes in the vicinity of, the immediate vicinity of where the storage. Or storages, if there are more than one, are going to be built. They're going down, if it's a concrete storage, they're going down at least a meter and a half. Below the lowest point of the storage, so below the floor of the storage. They're, they're checking for the aquifers, the shallow aquifers, they're checking for the soil type. In terms of, does it have any, if it's a clay soil, does it have any, any ability to, to hold nutrients if there was a breach in the concrete, for example? The other thing that they are looking for at the soil is, is they're also sending it to the lab. To, to do some, some tests to make sure that it is, it is, it is suitable for those purposes. And they're, they're checking to see. Looking at the soil itself to see if there's any indication that the water table would rise at other times of the year. So if. If you start to see kind of mottled soil, you know, of, of different colors. That's a sign that it, it may at times be, be saturated and may at times be not saturated, and you tend to get the different colors in it. And so, so the geoscientist would do that. The geoscientist would also then be talking to the, the design engineer. And they would be looking, looking at then coming up with a, a plan to, to build the storage. And the premise of the nutrient management regs. Terms of building manure storages is that there is two levels of protection. So one level of protection is, is the concrete and the rebar and the actual construction of the. The construction of them, of the container itself. But then the other one is. Is that if the soil does not provide some of the natural protection, like a clay soil, a certain depth above bed, bedrock or above the aquifer. Then you're looking at either a synthetic liner. Or, you know, a compacted clay liner where the compacted clay would be brought in from another source. And so all those things come together and, and the design engineer at that point. Has to incorporate all that into the design and, and once it's all finished, it's completed, the design engineer also can be expected to. To issue a basically a report of completion and submit it to, to the building official and also to the farmer as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments or anybody from the, go, go ahead, Wenda? Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. So I have some questions.
We got about five minutes here, so.
Okay, I'll make it quick. I have a lot. Of questions and I'll, I'll try and hone it down. So I just want to ask Mr. Slack. How he's planning on managing, going to manage the safeguard. How does he manage to safeguard his current property? I understand it's on, it's on limestone and granite. Close to the shield. And also his well water. Is it drinkable? And how far from the barn is the barn? And how often is it tested?
Okay, so the manure, the manure spreading is done under the jurisdiction of the Nutrient Management Plan. And we follow that to the letter. The well beside the barn that supplies the barn, supplies drinking water for the barn, for anybody that's in there is about thirty-five, forty feet from the barn and it's tested yearly.
So you're pretty close to the Claire, the, a river there. Is it the Claire River? That's across the road from your barn?
Well. So you're, you're going to have to redefine close because I think I'm close to Jeff Thompson. And that, that river is about two kilometers south of our property. So maybe you better do that first.
Two kilometers south? Okay, okay, thank you. I, I just, I had seen it when I was driving out to your property. And it seemed that the road was sort of. From time to time, very close to that river. So can I ask you about your education? As a farmer, what have you? What, what's your background, you and your wife?
You're going to run out of time with that. We're both university educated. My son has a university education. He's come back to the farm. We have thirty years' experience in the hog industry between contract and owning and. You know, honestly, we've got a clean slate and the assumption that we're not going to have one is insulting at the least.
Okay, we're.
Would you be expa-
We're at six fifteen here. And we're going to shut this meeting down here because we got a council meeting. I know Doug had his hand up. Doug, if you got time for one question here, I'm sorry to cut you off, but Doug's got one question only and then we're, we're gonna.
My question was quick and that was the XCG report. Topic three, question two, and it refers to. Well, testing for drawdown. And I'm trying to understand whether it actually covers the well in the village or not. Said figures depicting the area of influence drawdown observed that the observation well. Locations during the pumping test should be included in the. Sorry, assessment. The, the inclusion of these figures will assist in the. Assessment of whether any residential wells could be impacted. And I just wondered, is there going to be any village wells tested during this? Second, I go G testing, well testing.
Mark, do you want to, do you know the answer to that?
Partially, yeah. So the wells in the village along the eastern property boundary, they're going to be included. In the baseline survey where a consultant will go around and collect water quality samples. However, there's a lot of monitoring wells on the property now, and I think that's what XCG is referring to. During the pumping test that Malrose did in March, they monitored the water levels in those wells to see how far they dropped. And what XCG is saying, rather than just report how far they dropped, they want to see a, a map. That shows the contours, same as you would see the, the ground surface contour, what's happening below the ground. So that would mean an area of where you could expect the water table to drop a certain amount of distance. And obviously, if it was to, in too excess, then it wouldn't be acceptable. So. What XCG showed with their original testing was the water table at distance didn't drop very much at all. And we're, we're quite fortunate with this property in that there are a number of water monitor wells at different distances. So obviously closer to the pumping well, you could see the water table drop more. And as you get farther away, the water table basically doesn't drop.
Thank you, Mark, for now that's sufficient. I know there's a lot of concern with the village wells. So I'm glad to see that there'll be some correlation to those wells. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to go on through here. We got. We're done delegations. I just for consideration, I need a motion to receive. Or do. Move by John, second by Debbie, on favor. Carrie. Before we get to confirming bylaw, I got a couple of things I want to say here. You know, there's a lot of people likely listen here tonight more than what's on Zoom right here now that we can see. But there've been a lot of emails going out. I've got a lot of emails and everybody has. And, you know, there's some emails that. Everybody has the right to do them how they want to say, but some of them are a little touchy. And I'm going to tell you right now what, the emails are going to our office. I had a chat with Jason Sands the other day and our C E O. And he, he's, he's a little upset there that we're getting these emails in there, email after email after email, and they want a response right away. Well, I'm going to ask council tonight at our regular meeting that any of these emails come in. Now, if they feel that they got to be dealt with, they will come to a council meeting. Because we have other work to do out there and he's not going to sit there and try to answer a hundred emails a day to different people. And you don't get to them and, and then they're not happy. So this is, this is going to happen anyway. Anybody got an email, fine, but they might not get an answer. But if it's important, we will talk about, we'll come to councils. I just want to pass that on. You know, it's because they're busy out there. We have more things going on than the hog farm here. We got a lot of work with this COVID sort of put us behind. So we got to show respect to our employees out there and our senior staff and, and, and the council. We're doing what we can here. We, we talked to professionals on this. And we're going to make decisions. So, you know, if people don't hear from us, you'll know why. I just want to pass that on. So for that being done, I have a confirming bylaw. For the meeting, move by Doug, second by sharing, all in favor. Carrie. Motion to adjourn, move by Wenda, second by John, all in favor. And I want to thank everybody else for participating tonight and Peter, Mark and Mark and, and the people from the concerned citizens. And thanks again. And we're going to. Close down now and hopefully start our intermedia.